We can hear you here. Kristen, does he... the audience...
Ah, now you got sound.
Yeah.
Ah, now you got sound.
What the heck is that?
He's gonna turn his TV... turn the TV off.
Mel, can you turn your television off?
Oh yeah.
Is it on? Yeah, I'm looking at it.
You have to turn it down because it's giving us feedback.
Can you simply mute it? Oh, I see.
All right, the sound... my sound is off.
Okay, we're not getting the feedback now.
The problem is I can't hear you guys.
Just put it on softly till you can hear.
You know what I'm thinking, don't you, Chris?
I know.
All right, how's that?
I'm thinking we need Chris... I'm thinking we need Krista Han.
It's Dr. Sol, you're laughing historically or something.
Well, if you weren't such a klutz, Mel, this wouldn't be a problem.
Who under that less, I truly appreciate that comment.
We're okay now. Okay?
We're okay if you're okay.
We're okay. We ready? Good evening, everyone. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee. It's August 24th. This meeting is being broadcast by WCTV and being recorded by our recording secretary, Mrs. Ruiz. And we'll start with public participation. Is there any... Oh, and Mr... yes. Mel Lazarus is participating remotely because he's not able to be here this evening due to help. Public participation. Is there anyone who would like to participate? Have anything? Okay, we'll go to our next item, which is the good news, and I'll turn it over to...
Thank you. I would like to ask Mrs. Siemens to come up, as well as Nicole Mazzoli, who's president of our elementary PTA. And while she's coming up, it's remarkable the support, the energy, and all that the PTA has done to help our students, so thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. So, Mrs. Mazzoli is here from the Wareham Elementary PTA, and we had such an awesome fundraiser towards the end of the year with the Boost-a-thon, so she's going to tell us how the money has been spent in the schools.
Thank you for having me. So, we were able to, at the end of the day, we raised... able to keep $43,000 in profit to divide between the two schools, Minnetonka and Decces, and so we went ahead and put a proposal together, and we split it in half. We have... at Decces, we did about 75 percent technology and 25 percent playground-type things, so we were able to buy 22 sets of classroom headsets. We did some license to Glogster. I don't know if you know what that is, but it's a very exciting online presentation that the kids can be doing in class and learning all about that. We did some doc cameras, projectors. We have some subscriptions to Raz Kids, A to Z reading. We have... very exciting this year. First grade has some Steam Robotics. They have these little robots that follow colors and things like that. Very exciting. The team's very excited about that. We were able to purchase iPad covers for them, so that the iPads will be taken care of. We bought 15 recess bags, so that each grade will be able to take something out to the playgrounds with them. And we purchased a specialty swing for special needs for the children, so that they can have the harness and all that, because we didn't have one out there, so we went ahead and purchased one of those. We also purchased a group swing that's gonna replace the tire swing there, so we... that was at Decces. At Minnetonka, we were able to purchase some speakers that they needed for their projectors and laptops, some more projectors, doc cameras. We have a laptop that we've ordered, another Glogster license over there. I know one of the teachers emailed me the other day, and she's very excited. Already has a presentation ready to go with it. So, one of the other things that we were able to purchase for both schools, it's called Teachers Pay Teachers, which is an online program for the teachers. That's really great, gives great ideas, helps them in the classroom with a lot of things. They were all very, very excited about that, so we were able to purchase some of those. At Minnetonka, we have basketball hoops that we're gonna put out on the playground. It was very difficult for us with this, because although we would love to put a nice, big playground up there, we also know that the feasibility study's being done, but we raised so much money for it. What we did in our vote for the end of the year is we put about $14,000 in reserve right now. We have some playground equipment that we have had priced out that will fit within this budget, but this year, my goal is gonna be to try and get a community build for us over at Minnetonka, so open house. I will be talking with parents, and hopefully we can get the community involved. Because the Falmouth Swings in Rockin' all over there, all... the gentlemen have came and seen us, and they have some state-of-the-art, great stuff for the kids. I know there's been studies done about, you know, centrifugal motion and things that the kids aren't getting anymore that's important in their day-to-day swings for the older kids and things like that, so I'm hoping to get a community build, so that we can go ahead and get more for our money. If not, we will get swings or something put up there. It just will be less if I can't get a community build together. And last but not least, we will be gifting some money to the fifth graders. I will try and meet with the fifth grade team at some point, because our fourth graders helped us raise that money, and we wanted to make sure that we went ahead and helped them with something here at the middle school. I need to wait for everything to kinda shake out, to make sure that we know where we're at for that, but I think it's important to be united, and, you know, we're elementary, and they come to middle school, and I think it's a nice gesture that we just go ahead and do that, but... and everybody voted for the membership that we do that. And I think that that was pretty much it. That was our biggest fundraiser of the year. It was our most exciting, and I really can't tell you enough that it brought more than money to the table. Teachers were just ecstatic. Families were ecstatic. It was such a united event that we felt from start to finish, and I felt like that was... these are the events that we need to do, to get families together. Support of the teachers. I mean, I asked them to do things that I thought I was gonna get hung for, when I asked them to redo their doors and all this stuff, and they embraced it and loved it. I got email after email saying they just couldn't believe how they felt and how happy our schools were for the two weeks, and the kids learned social, emotional things of behaving together. And this year, we already signed up. We're gonna be doing it again this year, and our theme is backyard box office. I saw the Boost-a-thon team the other day, and it's all about young entrepreneurs, movie makers, things like that, so the kids are gonna learn another whole theme of six days this year, so...
And what Mrs. Mazzoli is not saying is how much work that it entailed and it involved. And I know Mrs. Spinad from Decces was instrumental in bringing these ideas forth to us, but I wanna thank Mrs. Mazzoli publicly for not only her leadership during these fundraiser efforts, but her board as well. It's a small group of people who do a lot of work, and we would love to encourage more families to attend our PTA meetings, become active members, because they're doing a lot of work with just the small numbers that we have, and imagine if we had even more people, what we could do. So, I just wanted to thank you, Nicole, for all your work that you've done. Looking forward to working with you again this year, as I know Mrs. Noonan is, and I just appreciate all the work the PTA does for our students, so thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. We love working with administration, and let me just say on a side note to our parents that there's no greater pleasure than being able to get into the schools and see these kids, because at the end of the day, every decision we make here, and we do at the PTA level and things, is because of the kids, and we love them. I had a unique opportunity to spend the entire week at Decces. I was the cheerleader there for the week, realized my age by the end of the week, but I got to meet kids and I get to see them, and it's just... it blesses my heart to see them. So, I would say, parents, give them the opportunity to volunteer in the classrooms and be at this PTA meetings. Give you just such a great insight to the schools and the administrators and teachers that work very hard every day.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate everything that you do, and to hear you talk about, you know, it's all about the kids. That's what we're all about first and foremost, you know, what's right for the kids, what are we doing for the kids. All the decisions should be based on thinking about those kids, and you've done a tremendous job. Thank you very much. Would anyone else?
I think it's an extraordinary achievement, just extraordinary, and please keep us informed about the community build, because I think... I assume that's what happened at Decces quite a number of years ago?
Yep, sorry. It won't be quite like Decces, I don't think.
But is that the general idea?
It's general, yes. We will probably see...
You have someone coordinating and lots of helpers?
Yes, yep. My husband has asked me not to involve him in this study. Took down Decces, and he helped and put it up, and he said... but... so we're hoping to get more dads that are in the construction that can help us with the ground cover and things like that, but it'll be a lot like that, asking to come out and help.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It just... what you folks do is immeasurable, and the pride that you take in seeing your accomplishments come to fruition is very, very important. And the only thing I can say is that it does take a village, and it takes dedicated people to put themselves out and to go the extra mile, and I'm not even gonna say that it should be an effort from everyone, but I'm gonna use the word obligation. And I think that an awful lot of parents out there have an obligation to be part of the village and to work behind the scenes to make this happen. So, anything that I can do to increase your membership, I'd be more than happy to do it, but I wanna thank you very much for what you do, and I know how good you feel after it's done and you can accomplish what you've accomplished, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I mean, pretty much everything has been said, and I just wanna reiterate that, you know, it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, at the end of the year in June, we had an award ceremony for grade four. Now, the good news is, we had such a short month, because we only had those two snow days we had to make up, but it left us with such a short schedule. So, once grades closed, the teachers then had to quickly go through their grades and select students that would be getting an award. We tried to keep it as a surprise for the students, so we mailed out letters to families informing them if their child was getting an award, so they could come to the award ceremony. Unfortunately, there were a few families who did not get the letter in time, and they missed that particular ceremony. We invited them to the meeting, so that we could formally recognize their students, and they would be able to see their children get the award that was given that particular day. So, we have one such family that is here, so I would like to tell you about the award before I give it to them. So, we had received two letters. One says, "Please accept my congratulations on receiving the President's Education Award. I commend you for the powerful example you have set for your family, friends, and peers, and it is a privilege to join in recognizing your achievement. Our country faces great challenges, and we will overcome them if we all work together in common purpose, no matter who we are or how old we may be. America looks to students like you, whose dreams and determination know no bounds to strengthen our communities and help drive our nation forward. Your commitment to your education demonstrates the creativity and energy that will chart the course of our unwritten history, allowing us to reimagine reality and seek new frontiers. I am inspired by your motivation and work ethic, and it gives me great hope to know our future will be written by ambitious young people like you. I encourage you to continue working hard and aiming high, and I wish you all the best." And that was signed by the President, Barack Obama. Then we had, "Congratulations on being recognized as a 2016 President's Education Award recipient. President Barack Obama and I believe that honoring student achievement and commitment is important. With specific goals and high aspirations, we can encourage our nation's young people to continue to achieve at higher levels. The President's Education Awards seek to honor students who meet challenging standards of academic excellence, as well as those who have overcome obstacles to their learning. It recognizes achievement and hard work in the classroom, while encouraging students to reach even higher. As you receive this award, you remind us that hard work can pay off, and that anything is possible with determination and effort. By earning this award, you have set a path of high expectations and can inspire your peers to do so as well. I urge you to continue to challenge yourself to be the very best." And that was signed by John B. King Jr., the Acting Secretary from the United States Department of Education. So, Robert Alpert was a fourth grade student last year at Minnetonka Forest. He was nominated for the President's Education Award for Outstanding Academic Achievement. He also received a Music Masters Award for showing wonderful musical skills from Mr. Hart, his music teacher. So, I would like to call Robert up to the stage, so I can formally hand him his certificates, and I would like to, again, apologize to his family, who did not receive the letter in time and could not be there, but I'm very glad that you're here this evening, that you could see him receive this award. May I ask Dr. Stedman to come up, because he's the receiving principal, just in time, Robert, because I'm handing you off to grade five.
And I would also like to take this opportunity to recognize Josh Albert. Just wanted to say that Josh Albert, last year, was also recognized for his academic achievement and his hard work, and last year, he was nominated to the Junior National Honors.
Very good.
The family affair.
Well done, well done.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Something tells me the parents should be up there, too.
Next, we have approval of the minutes from the meeting of July 6th, 2016. Are there any questions? Or were there any corrections?
Move approval.
Second?
That's presented.
I second it.
Okay, we will have a roll call, because we have Mel there, so...
Yes.
All ayes?
Aye.
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 Aye. Mel?
Aye. Aye.
Five ayes. Five oh oh. Our next order of business is the appointment of the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, and Madam Superintendent, turn it over to you.
I am recommending to the committee that Dr. Andrea Schwam be appointed to the position of Assistant Superintendent. I respectfully submit this for your approval.
Do we vote on it or discuss? Okay. We'll take a roll call vote on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
No, you need a motion.
Okay, motion first, right?
So, moved. Second.
Roll call.
Aye.
All those in... aye?
Aye.
Abstain.
Mel?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Four ayes, one abstain.
Would you instruct Mr. Lazarus that he only gets to vote once?
Mr. Lazarus, Chairman Lazarus, you only have to vote once.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
At this time, I'm going to sign off and leave you to your devices, that it's about time for me to take some medications and head for the... head for my chair.
Okay. Thank you for your attendance this evening.
I'll see you all next meeting, and thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
I wonder if his medication is like a bottle of wine or something?
Okay, the next agenda item is regarding the Global Education Student Trip to Cape Verde. Mrs. Stama?
Well, would it be... Madam Chair, just... would it be appropriate to...
Oh, congratulate.
Congratulate Dr. Schwam. It is kind of anticlimactic. Congratulations, Andrea.
Yes.
Good evening. I am Nicole Stammer, and I was assistant to the previous person in charge of leading the Global Ed Team, Henry St. Julian. Upon some turnover, I am now the lead person, and I have a male who would be assisting me on the trip, Joe Marcus. And originally, the trip had... all the documentation had 2016, February 2016, as the leave date, and I kind of showed up late for that, in terms of I didn't know there was a 2016 event that was supposed to happen, but when I heard about the 2017 event, I was happy to join, whereas I had housed students from Cape Verde when they came to visit the previous year. So, we, in 2017 of February, plan to, with your permission, take the students, visit our sister school during the February vacation. I'm not sure if that needs permissions, or if the permissions were already granted, and then they can just be extended to the next... the next year.
Any questions?
You refer to February... February, but this looks like it was originally planned for April.
Oh, was it?
Yes.
I apologize.
So, which is it? Is it the spring break or the February break?
February break of 2017.
Okay.
Is our leave time.
Okay.
Do we vote on this again?
I think so.
I just have a question. So, I assume that the chaperones pay their own way, is that right?
Yes, chaperones pay their own way.
And the students been doing any fundraising or anything?
The students will be fundraising with events coming up in the near... near future for the fall, going into the winter. We have some fundraising ideas. We're just waiting for school to be back in session, to be able to really get together and have those events come off.
Just... just to be clear, because this was... this was confusing in a prior trip. There's the... you and... and it was a Mr. Marcus?
Myself and Mr. Marcus.
Mr. Marcus.
Are the lead.
You're not considered chaperones, correct? You're not paying your own way, is that correct?
I am not considered a chaperone.
Correct.
I am the lead, now that Mr. St. Julian has left.
Okay, is Mr. Marcus considered a chaperone?
He is.
Okay, so you're not paying your way... own way, and I don't expect you to.
Yeah, I am leading.
You are leading the tour, and there's a tremendous amount of responsibility and work involved in that.
Yes.
Okay, so you're not, but everybody else is paying their own way?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted that to be clear.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion, questions? Do I have a motion? Do we vote again for this, too? Motion to...
I move we approve the Cape Verde Global Education Trip for February of 2017.
Second.
Now, we don't need roll call. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstain. Okay, four, five, four, four oh oh.
Thank you. With those permissions, now, I will begin our communications with the sister school, and we'll have Skype sessions, but I didn't wanna kinda go on with that until we were here tonight.
Congratulations on your promotion.
Yes.
Yeah. And on a side note, just to report back, Indiana and I made safe return back from Indiana. We have lots of great ideas, and Indiana's voice will be plenty loud to all of you this year, I am sure. He has great events already planned, and he has lots of work planned ahead for me.
I'm sure he does.
Could you share a little bit about the honor that's going to happen for Indiana with the National New England Dairy?
Absolutely. So, in the past, it's been a whirlwind since we've gotten back. We've had a couple of honors. We were invited to a Patriots Training Day camp a few weeks ago, where it was VIP access for us to go and watch them train, and because Indiana is such a wonderful example of how a student should have a voice, he has been chosen to do some print media for New England Dairy Council and Fuel Up to Play 60. So, they are going to come to our school and do a two-hour photo session with him, and his face will be on posters and other print that will be shipped out to schools around New England. And so, up in our very own cafeteria, I am expecting a billboard-size Indiana.
That's great.
So, it's been a great experience, but it... we need more students onboard, and we have family fitness and fun nights, health and fitness nights planned for every other month going forward throughout the year.
Fabulous, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Steedman, the Middle School Handbook? Oh, I missed him. Excuse me, it's Mr. Ward-Ricus, Spring Athletic Report.
Hello. I was very happy with the spring last season. It was the best spring we've had in a long, long time. Two of our teams qualified for the tournament, the softball team and the boys tennis team. Track teams both did very, very well, and it's getting better. I'm very, very pleased, and I'm anticipating a better fall this year also. I don't know if you wanna go over the numbers or anything, or if that's any questions on anything.
Does anyone have any questions?
I'm good, thank you, Ed. The report is great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
Now, it's Mr. Steedman with the Middle School Handbook.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me come here this evening and speak with you about the handbook. I believe everyone has received a copy of the changes, and I hope my explanations were clear. Before we get to any questions going through the handbook, I just wanted to state three items. The changes that were made to the Middle School Handbook over the summer attempted to achieve three... three things. One, and this... all the changes that were made were made in consultation with our lawyers from Stoneman, Chandler, and Miller, and primarily Nancy Neville, who guided us through the process of making what she viewed as appropriate changes to the handbook. So, we hope to achieve clarity in our handbook, but also... So we hope to achieve clarity in our handbook, but also, um, some changes to organization that made reading the handbook easier for students, parents, and members of the community. We also attempted to achieve parity with the high school, and that the way the high school laid out their discipline code, we attempted to resemble their, their views on, uh, discipline. And so you saw those changes there as well. And finally, um, the third piece is that we believe that the changes to, that were made to the middle school handbook reflected, um, characteristics of the new law, primarily, uh, 37H and 3/4, which talks about, um, the principals and the administrative teams' use of alternatives when appropriate to suspension. So we believe that that has been laid out for you in, in this, um, in the changes to the handbook. If you'd like me to go through each item, I'd be happy to do that, or if you would prefer, I can just answer specific questions.
How would people like to see that?
I would like to hear the rationale for the changes.
Do you want to go through it?
I'd like to hear the rationale for the changes.
Great. All right, so, um, in pages, uh, four through, uh, six, we just updated the, the new members of the faculty and the calendar and, uh, the terms that were updated to reflect the current calendar year. Um, on, from, um, we moved some things, um, in terms of moving an area that was under excessive absences, called the place of attendance and discrimination. We moved that to page eight, following the right to an equal education. So the text remained, uh, the same, we just moved it. And again, that sort of goes in line with in terms of a, an attempt to reorganize our, our handbook to make it more clear. There are some elements under page 12, under attendance, that were revised and reorganized, as I said, after consultation with our lawyer. It, it's long, I'd be, I can read all of those specific changes for you, or would you just like me to go through and, and explain?
Uh, how about explaining?
Okay.
Oh.
And I can answer, how about, and then I can answer questions along the way. Yes?
I would love to know how many of these, when you make a change, how many, how much of it is the result of a lawyer saying, "You really need to do this based on state law"? And how many, how mu, how many of them are, and you can do this as you go through, what you and your team believe are just, uh, they're just simply better policies for the school as compared to the sta, the state is telling you what to do?
The, great question. In my opinion, um, we, we felt that the counsel made by our lawyers was, was spot on. I thought, I thought they were, they were excellent pieces of advice. So she would recommend something, and then asked us to change the language. I went back to my team, we consulted with that, and we agreed for those pieces. So I, I sort of found it was a nice balance between those two elements.
Great, but, but the lawyer was not necessarily telling you to make a change based on state law. She was simply telling you, based on her experience, this, these would be good changes to make, and then you had the discretion to either do it or not?
It was, it was both, right? There were times in this piece that it was, it was based on state law, that she asked us to make that change.
Okay, so when you made those changes based on state law, I would love to know, in those cases...
You bet.
Okay?
Of course.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, okay. Um, so that was an explanation of, of attendance. I think primarily with her, um, so let's go back to an example of the absences. Simply moving that piece of place of attendance and discrimination, she encouraged us to make that change. Had nothing to do with state law, she just thought, "That's going to be clear for your community, to have it placed there." Then we went to our team and said, "Does that make sense?", and that's, that's what we did. Okay.
Could, could I just ask a clarity question?
Yeah.
Who is the team?
The team is Daniel LeFever, who is my assistant principal, Sandy Pont, who's the other assistant principal, and that's primarily with discipline in the handbook. Those are the two people who are primarily...
So you had no handbook committee?
Not that...
And I know you didn't have time to really put them together, you know, with all due respect. This, this probably should have been done before you came onboard. But there really should be a handbook review committee.
Absolutely.
Made up of parents, students.
Right.
Faculty. So the team is your assistant principals.
At this moment.
So this is an administrative slant of the administrative, of the handbook.
Correct.
An administrative interpretation of the handbook.
Based on the recommendations from our lawyer, yeah.
So, so there really isn't a handbook team, it's your administration.
At this, at this time.
And I understand why.
Yeah.
Logistically, it was kind of hard for you to put this together in a short time that you had to put it together, because technically, this should have been done before you came onboard. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, but my, my, the, the hope was that we really wanted to have a handbook on day one.
I know.
That was, that was our goal.
No, I understand.
That was our goal. And so, so we made these changes, and we, um, we, as I said, consulted with the lawyer with the idea that we can have this starting hopefully tomorrow.
Completely understand, but I just need you to know who the team was.
No, I agree, and that, but I just wanted to say one more thing on that, is that moving forward, I see that as a key aspect of our school council when we develop that, that they will be working throughout the year to revise this as appropriate. It's something that should be reviewed every year. So that's my hope as well. Moving forward, the, um, on page 13, the section under excessive absences has been changed, and some parts moved to attendance on page 12. Here's an example of a direct, uh, recommendation from the lawyer that we agreed. Excessive absences may result in any of the following actions, retention, legal action, or referral to the Department of Children and Families. Moving on, the new language to qualify for this award for perfect attendance, that you may not have any tardies or dismissal, that is new language. The bulk of the changes occurred starting on page 39, where this is recommendations to update our discipline code. And here's a nice marriage between recommendations made from the lawyer in terms of how he grouped things, but also my team's, um, belief that we should mirror elements of our handbook. It should mirror the high school's handbook. So what the high school does, as we explained in the, in the meeting in June, they have a, and a description of certain disciplinary actions, and then consequences below. So for example, um, we looked at the infractions in Group A, and some things were added, inappropriate physical contact, changed to unwelcome physical contact of a minor nature. But then, as you see below under Group A, you have consequences. Counseling, office detention, Friday detention, and suspension. Based on the severity of those actions, we are then going to spell out specifically to our community, these are the potential consequences for that action. It differs from the high school in Group A and Group B, only in the fact that we have added counseling in Group A and Group B, because when we are talking about middle school students, grade five, sometimes they'll make a mistake, they will use bad judgment, and we want to use counseling as a piece of our repertoire to make sure, to engage them to make good decisions. Looking at Group D, as you can see there, um, there's also a clear, um, adding of Chapter 71, Section 37H and 37H and 3/4, which talks about all those other offenses that fall under 37H and 3/4. On page 43, we have changed student discipline. We have changed that to principals' discretion and authority. And I want to highlight the article where it says, "Following, the principal shall consider ways to re-engage the student offender in the learning process." We amended the sentence, "And with the exception of offenses governed by MGL 7137H", which are major offenses, and 37H and a half, in which a student has been charged with a crime outside of school, "shall avoid using long-term suspension until other remedies and consequences have been employed." And that is a clear reflection of 37H and 3/4. Moving on, this was a recommendation from the lawyer, but the administrative team, myself, agreed with outlining the definitions of suspension. I thought the clarity here was excellent. Delineating specifically what is an in-school suspension, and how might that differ from a short-term suspension, a long-term suspension. I thought that sort of reorganization provided clarity for our entire community. Then we also, um, added that, a piece following about, uh, in-school suspension, in-school suspension. As appropriate, the assistant principal or principal shall inform the student of the length of that in-school suspension. We believe this section also added clarity in terms of the due process piece of our handbook. I thought that her recommendations were excellent and, and clear in terms of our responsibility to making sure that those people who might be involved in infractions and their caregivers were informed of their rights under the law. Finally, as we move on to page 45, the recommendation was, and my administrative team agreed, to break up Massachusetts General Law 37H, 37H and a half, and finally, a separate heading of 37H and 3/4. Finally, on page, uh, 65, based on the conversations this evening, we are not going to be able to, if you agree with the changes made, we will not be able to go to print immediately. So it's important that we say, in order to make sure that this handbook is available to students in our community on day one, that the handbook changes were received, that was changed to viewed. So we are going to put this up online, so that we can still disseminate that paperwork for parents to sign off that they read, have read, and understood, with a paper copy being made available to them in the next few days. Willing to take questions?
Just three things, uh, two really quick definitional. What's the definition of a dismissal? Because when you put it into the context of perfect attendance, it sounds like it's necessarily a pejorative, and I can imagine a cer, a dismissal not necessarily being something for, for which the student should be held accountable. So what is the definition of a dismissal?
The dismissal would be a caregiver calls the school and says, "I would like Susan to be excused for the day."
And if that happens, they are suddenly precluded from having perfect attendance, correct?
Correct, the way it is, the handbook is written.
I'm unco, I'm uncomfortable with that. Do you share my discomfort?
I think in terms of how it is used, I know what you're saying, but I think the reason why it was written in that way was the idea that the key was to keep the student in school. Yeah, for per, perfect attendance means perfect attendance. Was there, that student was there in that building the entire year.
I guess I would love it if it said, you know, an unexcused dismissal, or something that'll gave you the discretion.
Yeah.
To say, "This was a perfectly legitimate reason for the student not to be, to be dismissed, and I would have done it myself," you know, if I were that student's parent or guardian, as compared to other reasons that you had to let the child go, but you really didn't feel like it was a good use of that child's time. So is there any way we could in, insert the word, um, unexcused dismissal in that language? The assistant superintendent is giving me an "I". I'm not sure whether that means she agrees or disagrees.
In my opinion, I'd like to be able to, um, take another tack, which, which you had mentioned, the idea that the principal has discretion at that, you know, the idea that...
Yes, that's fine.
Right.
However, whatever language you use to, to give yourself that discretion on that issue, I would, I would...
The student has to go to the hospital, right?
Yeah.
Has to go, yeah. It'd be a shame that he or she might be excluded from that.
Just one, and the second, you've now twice used the term caregiver. Is that a carefully chosen word as compared to parent, guardian?
Yeah, I, I'm attempting, um, to the best of my ability to reflect those people who are involved in the lives of our students, and I understand that sometimes it is a parent. I understand that sometimes it's a, a guardian. I'm trying to use a broad, broad definition term.
I'm an old healthcare person, so when you say caregiver, I think something different than parent and guardian.
So, I, yeah.
But you're saying in the education world, caregiver is understood to mean all of the above?
Caregiver? It's a better, yeah, I, I apologize if I'm trying to use the word...
Oh, I'm not asking for an apology, I'm just trying to understand.
I'm trying to create a large tent, I guess.
Got it.
I'm trying to be as inclusive as possible.
Got it, okay. And then the final question is a, perhaps a 50,000-foot question, and that is, there is a philosophy that says that policies should generate an environment that is the greatest good for the greatest number. I didn't make this up, okay? Do you think there's something about the, all these rules? Uh, do we bend over backwards in such a way that it's in fact not necessarily the greatest good for the greatest number?
No, in my opinion, I, I think the rules and regulations that are coming, um, from the state, I understand why they're making those recommendations to us, and I tend to agree with them. That I, I think, um, as we discussed today, 37H and 3/4, the idea that the school should try to find other ways to engage kids in class, and, and maybe in the past, other remedies of, of suspension, maybe not the most beneficial. So, um, it really takes us to know our kids really well, and to make decisions for them and their families that are going to create good. And I think if you are creating good on an individual level and, and making those decisions for them, and trying to find alternatives to keep them in that classroom and keep them learning, in my opinion, I think you spread the good to other people. One thing about what we've talked about here today, these were primarily the changes made. I mean, the, the handbook itself is long, it's very long. So I, I guess, if I'm giving this impression that there's so much attention to the legalese, so to speak, on this, I don't think it gives a clear reflection of our handbook in its entirety. I think our handbook in its entirety has, shows sort of that Viking spirit. These were just really tailored changes made as a way to make us more aligned with what the high school had done.
I hear you. Well, the school committee members obviously represent parents, especially parents, not only parents, but parents. And the, almost all of the parents with whom I interact want the best possible educational environment for their children. And achieving that and being fair to the very small minority of kids who can't figure out how to adapt, behave, et cetera, within an educational environment is a tough job.
It's our greatest challenge, absolutely.
Enough said, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, discussion?
I was probably the most critical of the handbook last year at the middle school. Because, um, I have this strange notion that those handbooks go into everybody's home, all of your students' homes, and they should reflect our best work. So, um, and there were several revisions that came before us, and to be quite honest, uh, I still think that, um, some of the verbiage needs to be changed. Uh, it's pretty elementary. That being said, um, there is absolutely no way that I would have the expectation that that would get all squared away, uh, during your short tenure as principal. But I do think, um, that all of our handbooks should reflect excellence, uh, and in terms of verbiage, in terms of writing, um, you know, putting a few commas in is, is pretty good, I think. That being said, I also feel that, um... That being said, I also feel that the only thing I want in terms of the discipline code is not to have the educational process of the majority interfered by the minority. And that, for me, is a non-starter, and I know that a lot of it, you've added counseling to the discipline code in terms of a remedy, and that's all well and good, and I'm all for it, but I, I'm probably going to be your greatest advocate, but also your greatest critic if I feel that the educational process of the majority is being interfered by the behavior of the minority. And I just, I just have to tell you that out front, and that's kind of the way I've always operated for the last 50 years. So it's hard to change the stripes on the zebra. So as long as you understand that, I think that we're good. But I do think that there should be a process in terms of reviewing that handbook, both in terms of substance, but also in terms of presentation. And I think it should be part of that school council, it should be made up of teachers, students, parents, and it should be a regular, ongoing process, and that's just my opinion. Take it for what it's worth.
I do, thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask?
All set.
Okay. I guess I'd like to reiterate that I too would like to make sure that the discipline problems or the discipline of a few don't adversely affect the great majority of students. And I come from a middle school background myself, and I know what middle school's like. It's, it's a tough job in that area anyway, but you know, that's what needs to be done here too.
Yep, absolutely.
So, do we make a motion to approve the handbook?
I think before the motion, I just, I think it's, if we are going to include the recommendation from Mr. Swett, just to put in some language saying that, "Give me some discretion in that area."
Just to be clear, Madam Chair, I was planning an idea, I wasn't demanding that that change occur, I was leaving it up to the, up to the discretion and the judgment of you and your team. If you want to do that, that's great.
My only concern would be that if our hope is to have this on day one-
Your call.
Okay. I will put in some words indicating that I will be given discretion or they can appeal to me-
With respect to the dismissals.
With respect to the dismissals.
So should we have the wording of that now, or-
Technically, yes, if we're going to vote.
Yeah, that's, well, that's what I thought. So if we could form, there are good wordsmith also, if you could form-
Well, I think-
No?
I think the spirit is, I think the intent and the spirit is understood, and I just think that rather than get into the weeds here this night-
Yeah, I didn't, I agree with Dr. Sylvia, I don't want to get into the-
Let's just, you know, the intent and the spirit is there, and I'm sure that Dr. Stedman will run with it.
And I completely trust Dr. Stedman to-
So-
I don't need the wordsmith.
And maybe as we move forward, that could be one of the first things we tackle with our school council.
Okay.
So I think that a motion is probably in order.
A motion that does reflect-
I'll make a motion to approve, as submitted, the middle school handbook.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second the changes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 400, passed, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, next, I'll turn it over to-
Thank you. The next would be the appointment of the school nurse at the high school, and this is done in accordance of MGL Chapter 71, Section 53. The school committee shall appoint nurses. So Principal Palladino and I recommend the appointment of Mary Ann Ichabucci of Wareham to this position. She holds a Bachelor of Science degree from UMass Boston, she's licensed through DESI as a school nurse and is also a registered nurse. If you approve this, then it would be retroactive to today, as today was the first day of school for staff, so I'd be asking for your approval.
Any discussion, questions?
This is a really fine detail, but the documentation of her license is, in big, bold letters, unofficial. That's what the, do we have official confirmation that she has the license?
We do.
Okay, good. Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor, it's the bugs.
All in favor of the bugs?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 400. Okay, continue, Madam Superintendent, with the next business.
Thank you. The next business is to approve some contracts that have been negotiated, they've been ratified by their individual groups, and so now I bring them to you for ratification and approval. So the first group would be the secretaries, and I'm just trying to find mine.
I have it, you want this?
No, that's okay. The secretaries, there was some wording changed, and this has been a process of over a year and a half, so this goes back to 2015, so the pay will be retroactive. The pay for the secretaries, it would be in 2015, 1.5%, in 2016, 3%, in 2017, 2%. So I'd be asking the committee to please approve the contract for our secretaries association.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 400, passed.
Okay, the next one would be the custodial, and again, along with some wording and some language changes, the contract for the association is a three-year contract as well. It begins this school year, it's 3% this year, in 2017, it would be 3%, and in 2018, it is 3%, and I would be asking for approval.
Any questions, discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
400, approved.
Thank you. The next one would be for the cafeteria, and previously, we had two pay scales, we had a part-time and we had a full-time. However, there was no differentiation in the jobs, and so what we've done is we've merged into one pay scale. So for the cafeteria, it is also a three-year contract, and for the first year, which is this year, it's 3%, in 2017, it's 3%, and in 2018, it would be 3%. So I'd be asking for approval.
Any discussion, questions? Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
400, approved.
Okay, and the fourth contract is with the bus drivers. And as you know, this is an essential, well, all are essential jobs, but getting our students to and from school, you know, we certainly appreciate the buses that the town has purchased. We have 10 new buses that will be rolling out this year, and what we've seen across the Commonwealth is this, the bus drivers have, have been faced with increasingly stringent restrictions. There are fewer people wishing to drive buses, and so it's been a very, it's become a very competitive occupation. And so our bus drivers were leaving in droves because of our pay scale, and so we've negotiated, and it's also a three-year contract. However, we will be opening up the salary at, at the end of this school year. So this year, we've also combined steps, so for steps one, two, and three, the pay rate with no set aside for summer hours would be $25. For step two, which would include steps four, five, and six, it's $26 an hour, and for step three, which would include step seven and eight, it would be $27 an hour, and this is with no set aside pay for the summer. So I'd be asking the committee to please approve the bus driver's contract.
Any discussion or questions?
I've got a, I think that it's very important to understand, the community to understand out there that, you know, we have reviewed these, we still have to vote for it in public session, but we're going through these awfully fast, but we have reviewed them, we have had meetings on them, so I just don't want anyone to think that we're just pushing these things through in about two seconds. There has been discussion, but the one thing that Dr. Schaefer had said that resonates with me is the competitiveness, and it's so true, especially with the bus drivers, that, you know, it's really, really competitive because not everybody wants to do it, and we've got certain entities around the neighborhood that are paying more money than we pay. So to be competitive and to maintain the excellent drivers that we have, and we have excellent drivers, is very, very important. But that also filters into all aspects of the school department. We have to be competitive, and I think that that's a word that you might be hearing a little bit more in the future because it's just like everything else, and we want, we have to be competitive in terms of quality bus drivers, but we also have to be competitive in our professional staff. So I think it's a good word, and it's a word that probably will be heard a little bit more as we go along.
Good point.
Just to be clear, and to the superintendent, and maybe I could say this for Mr. McMillan when he comes up for his report, but this, this necessary increase in the compensation of our bus drivers obviously raises the cost of providing this service. While I still believe that even after doing this, it will make sense for us to continue to operate this as a department of the, of the school and the now school town, really, because maintenance is, is handled by the town. I do think that we periodically should review whether we remain competitive compared to outsourcing. Now, what people need to understand about outsourcing this to a private company, it would have no impact on the jobs of our drivers. They are valuable, and they would simply be hired by the, by the outside company, but we, we are relatively unique in the fact that we, it is a department of the town as compared to being done by a private company. So I think this raises the question, and I think if I was a member of the town, knowing this has been, come up a number of times over the years, I think it, it says we probably do need to look at that to make sure that it continues to be the smart thing to do. As I said, my belief is it's still going to be the smart thing to do, but I think we do need to periodically do that, and I suspect the Board of Selectmen will agree with me.
I do have one question that was actually asked of me from a member of the community, and I didn't have the answer, and that is, if this is approved, will it make any difference with the children that now are within a mile distance that aren't being picked up? No? Okay.
That's my knowledge. Everything stays the same in terms of the services.
All right. So now I have my answer, thank you.
With respect to the budget for this year, we've got these four contracts, are there any other contracts that will be impacting this, this current fiscal year?
No.
Okay. Other, as what we have approved, and this obviously assumes that we are successful in, in hiring and keeping drivers, sufficient numbers of drivers to operate the fleet without going to outside vendors to do that, if we, are we within our budget to do this?
If we can hire some additional outside drivers to drive added district runs, yes we are.
But, great, but I was including all four contracts.
Oh, yes, we are.
So we don't have any budget problems as long as we now have a competitive driver contract?
That's true.
Okay, thank you.
We haven't approved this contract yet either.
I understand, I understand.
So it's time? Is there any more discussion? Could I have a motion to approve the bus driver's contract?
So moved.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 400, contract approved.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Madam Superintendent, could you talk about the town meeting warrant?
I will, I'd like to invite Mr. McMillan to come up as well. Michael, please chime in as I go through these, if I've forgotten anything. The first town meeting warrant article would be to purchase the Fields and Grounds dump truck. Because it's a new dump truck, we have to have authorization to make the purchase, therefore we need a town meeting warrant article, so that's your first one. Your second one is to purchase a new vehicle for the driver's ed program. Currently, I believe we have over 140,000-plus miles on our vehicle, and it certainly is time to update. That also, because it's a new vehicle, we need to bring it to town meeting. And the final warrant article, so we have three this year, is our annual article that we bring every year, and it's for the McKinney-Vento funds, which would go into the revolving transportation.
Okay, are there any questions on these warrant articles? Any discussion?
I do think in the explanations, we do need to include things like number of miles, age of the vehicles, not only the driver's ed vehicle, but also the dump truck, because taxpayers will want to know, just what are we replacing? Why does it need to be replaced, et cetera, et cetera? So that should be added to those two explanations. The other thing that occurred to me as I was reading the McKinney-Vento is that we now, in this joint effort, part of the reason for the, for the McKinney-Vento money was, but I emphasize only part, was, and you can almost look at it as depreciation, is that since we are providing the service, we should, we should get, we should get the dollars, but we're not, we're not providing the, some of the service, and we're not providing the buses through our capital. So are we going to give the town access to some portion of the revolving fund to help them support the purchase of new buses in the future? You see, you see my point?
Yeah, so the McKinney-Vento money comes from the cost that we incur when we transport students that are homeless in other districts. So that is based on the primary line of fuel and payroll costs, and that's what we use it for.
And in theory, some depreciation.
And some depreciation.
Right.
So, A, I don't have the exact number yet that we'll be coming, we'll be receiving this year, but I believe it's a lot lower than we've had in the past.
I was afraid you were going to say that, yes.
Because we're just not, we just, last year, due to lack of drivers, and also just the situation with availability of, you know, where students were and so on, and when they came into the district, we didn't do much of the transporting of students, homeless students. So this might be a bit, so that might become academic, but-
The other, the other problem is that they pass a law, they say it's an unfunded mandate, therefore, we're going to pay you to do it, and then they add this little clause called "subject to appreciation," excuse me, "subject to appropriation." And as soon as they do that, that means they can get away with providing as little money as they like. So that's the, that's the problem in a nutshell. If we were just providing less services, fewer services, that would be one thing, but we're also being paid less to provide the same service, even though the costs have risen.
Yeah.
So, anyway, and that was-
I would say, on this occasion, this year, I think that's the general trend, but this year, the big reason for the fall is we're just doing less, that's the big reason.
Well, that doesn't bother me.
But hopefully, we will start to get-
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so now we'll vote on all of them, one at a time. The first one would be, do I have a motion to approve the town meeting article for the vehicle lease, for the truck? For the truck, preschool run? Do I have a motion? Second?
I'll second it, but I still haven't heard why we're replacing it.
Oh, we're replacing it because we desperately need one.
What's wrong with the current one?
The current dump truck?
Has no motor.
It's rusting. It's in dire need. We had a second truck this year that during our snow season, it couldn't be repaired. So we are down.
So we have an irreparable vehicle that we're replacing?
Yes.
That works for me, okay.
So were we here with a motion to accept in a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
400. The next warrant is... The driver's ed vehicle, replacement of the driver's ed vehicle. Do I have a motion to approve this warrant?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 400, motion approved. And the McKinney-Vento?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Didn't hear it down there.
Aye, sorry.
400. Next, we have Mr. McMillan, the end of the year financial report.
Hello, good evening. So, A, I did circulate a paper with the papers for this meeting, and I plan to run through some of the highlights on these slides here. A, I realize there is a lot of information, a lot of data, in both the paper and in these slides. And if you have any questions as we go along, of course, I'll do my best to answer them, or take them away if I have to do more research to, you know, get to the number of the issue. However, if you do have any questions or want to go into more detail, or anything that doesn't come up or isn't addressed this evening, you know, I'd be more than happy to answer any emails from school committee or anyone at home that has any questions by email or by phone if they wish to get in touch. So... So this is the expenditure from a local appropriation that we get from the town. It's kind of a boring slide. But basically, it shows there has been a very... There was a modest increase from 2007 through to around 2013, and since then, the increase has slowed. We did get slightly more from 15 to 16. And we know we had a larger increase into 2017. Key part of the budget, as we've discussed in the past, is the in-kind, and that's the money that... That's the services or the elements of our budget that are provided and paid for by this town. So, for example, our health care, the health care for our staff, the administrative costs. That sort of stuff is covered as in-kind, is a big part of our budget, particularly the health care. We had a huge jump from 2012 to 2013, which is a number of issues, including a health care holiday that increased the gap from 2012 to 2013. And, but as you can see, it's since slowed. From 15 to 16, actually, the increase was not due to health care of his employment contributions... Sorry, retirement contributions for employees. I should say, at this point, the FY '16 in-kind figure is still just an estimate. I don't have the final figures yet from the town, and I'm working with them to get that, which is part of the state report that we do in the fall. So it's a estimate based on what was budgeted. So this actually isn't in the report, but I wanted to provide it just to give you a sense of what's going on because this is the per... There's a similar table in the report that gives you the actual numbers. This is the per pupil numbers for this. It shows the number of students we have here, so, and then expenditure from the local appropriation, the school committee, in-kind. And the reason, I mean, this is just to recognize that although we have seen a small increase in our available funds from the town, because the number of students we have has gone down, that means our per pupil goes up slightly more. So I pulled this slide out, this information. So this is our, you know, as well as the money we get from the town, we receive funds from a number of other places, and they're captured on this slide. This is federal grants, private grants, revolving accounts, school lunch and state grants. So this is sort of... These bars are clustered together by year. This is just revenue. And each color is a different source, so it's a federal grant, private grant, so on. So this is also in the paper, and I just wanted to highlight, so we did see a bit of a reduction from 15 to 16, particularly in federal grants. But it's actually not quite as severe as it appears on this slide because, as I've... We've kind of discussed in the past, our federal grants don't run... Don't fit neatly onto our financial year, so depending on the timing of some of our payments. So what happened was, in FY '15, we actually received some money from the 14 federal grants, if you like. So that made the '15 look higher. And equally, we didn't in '16. We... There were some for IDEA in particular, which is a big sped grant. We received a final payment in FY '17. So that was $100,000 that would have, you know, obviously shifted that chart. So it's really... So we did overall see a reduction, but this would suggest it was 400,000. It wasn't that much, it was more like 100,000. And that's a... That is because two of our big grants, Title I and IDEA, together, they were down about 30,000, and then there was a couple other grants we didn't get.
I have a question about the grants.
Yep.
I don't want to know the, you know, exact amount, but I just wanted to know if we have an idea of what our projected grants are for the upcoming, the fiscal year '17?
So, yeah, so what I did to do that, I basically took the trends of the last few years and just projected out. And, you know, basically, I projected, I mean, the big grants... So where that's most important, well, from my perspective, where that's most important is where it's covering salaries, or where it's covering things which we have already... Which we're already planning to do. So a lot of grants, the money comes in, once we receive the money, then we can spend it, and it's not budgeted, it's not planned. And so it's just if we get it, we can do it. If we don't get it, we don't do it. So for those grants, I didn't, you know, we have a lot of people working all the time to try and get grants. Our assumption is always, we will continue in a kind of steady state. For the grants where they cover salaries, that's where I'm always more worried because we are employing the people that, you know, on Monday, they're going to start working, so we don't necessarily know when that budget's set and those people are hired, whether or not the grants are going to be there, that are going to offset some of their salaries. So to calculate that, I just looked at basically what the grants had looked like over the last three or four years and projected out if they'd gone up or down, you know, where that would leave us for next year. And so far, they've mostly been in line. So Title I didn't go down as it had the last couple of years. IDEA went down a little bit. Those are the big ones. So... So, a very long answer. I don't have a precise number. Basically, we focused on projecting the revenue from the big grants that cover salaries, and so far, that's kind of been in line with where we were.
Thank you.
From there...
Oh, wait a minute, question?
As long as we're on that topic, I was going to wait, but page five of, I guess it's five of 21, has all the grants and revenue and expenditures. And so, being the person I am, I went through it line by line, and then, and over half of them had more expenditures than revenue. And this was even true for prior years. Now, should I assume that that's because the revenue is just not booked? Because it comes in after July 1st? I mean, when more than half of the grants are... Were spending more than the revenue is coming in, that didn't seem right. But you seem to be saying that's because the revenue comes in in the next year, sometimes? Or are you not saying that?
So most of it... I'd like to go into the specific... Pull out the specific... I mean, you've had... I mean, I'd like to go and dig into it just to find out specifics, but most of it...
Well, as I said, more than half of them, that's the case. I mean... I could give you an example, and maybe we should take this offline.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's fine with me.
Yeah, we always balance the grants at the end of the process, so I know they're all balanced at the end.
And I guess what I'm asking, and maybe it's too difficult to do this, but is there any way, if we could do this chart by showing for... Well, let's say, for example, for '15, the revenue for '15 could show actual revenue?
Yep.
Right? That came in in '16?
Yeah.
But you could put it into the '15 column?
Yes.
Right? And for '16, could you accrue the revenue?
Yep.
So that it would create a clear picture? Am I making sense?
Yeah, 100%.
Okay. So I've said enough?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Since we're on that page, can you just explain the income-eligible contract for me? And why, I don't understand it? Why it says, first of all, I mean, I know we don't have it anymore. We haven't had it for a couple of years. And it says 2016 revenue zero, but the expenditure in 2016 was $71,564.
So we had a balance coming from... So we'd booked the balance that we wouldn't, you know, because that is actually the money that comes in from the preschool program.
You mean the tuition?
Yeah.
The tuition?
And that was the account we'd used. And we had saved, and we'd moved into a different account, but we had some, you know, that's now going into... We've set up a new revolving account for that that's specifically for that purpose. There was the money residual from the received the previous year. So rather than spending it as we receive it, because that's more difficult to budget and prepare because you don't know how much you're going to get, we tried to spend it the year after we receive it. So that's why, in that year, we didn't receive any, but we spent some, and then you'll see it in another...
So you haven't received any tuition this year?
So they came in a different...
This past year? Are we not charging anymore?
Yeah, it's just in a different... It's just in a different revolving account now. I'm just trying to do this with it. So let me get it for you. I'll get you the detail, but it went into a different account. It should be shown there, I might know. I'm going to try and see if I can find it on the paper. So... So, yeah, so if you go to Annex C, away at the bottom, there's 20, the revolver, 2028 income-eligible preschool, we received $26,000. So that's where that's gone now.
I'm sorry, where was that again?
That's on Annex C.
Okay.
Page 18.
Eight, yeah, 18.
18?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right at the bottom, third from the bottom, on page 18.
I just seem to be missing 18.
It's on the back side.
I thought I'd probably read it. Okay, I see it now. Okay. All right. I know it's a little tedious, but it's just so we don't end up with this again, can get rid of the income-eligible?
The name, yeah.
Title, yeah. Also, before I forget, and it was a question I should have asked before with the bus situation, because the other question that was asked was from a community member, was how much are we saving approximately by having that mile rule?
So I would need to go back. I was looking at this. So obviously, it's a slight... When we first did this in the budget in FY '16... We saved...
I just think...
To answer the question?
Yeah.
My memory and...
Is better than mine.
My memory is approximately $50,000.
Yeah.
My memory is saying the same thing, too. That's the number that popped into my mind from that time.
All right. I mean, I just can understand concerns within the community about their children walking, especially, the one concern I would have would be deacons because there are no sidewalks. So I assume it's being taken care of well?
Yeah.
But there is a concern out there.
So we do have, you know, that is a concern, and, you know, the transportation director and our school resource officer do review where students have to walk, obviously. You know, there's a... Obviously, the school committee policy is within a mile.
Right.
And we have put in a sort of shuttle bus to help pick up kids. So there's a... Because it's a particularly dangerous approach to deacons.
There is. And apparently, myself, I worry about it.
So we sort of...
And that awful bridge.
Yeah.
It's horrible.
So we pick up kids on the other side of that to avoid them walking under that particular spot because that's sheer concern. But obviously, within a mile, it's a high threshold because technically, you know, we don't provide transportation within a mile.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Michael?
Yep.
I had questions, too, about this page. I had the same questions, but also the circuit breaker amount?
Yep.
I know that the revenue, we use the revenue that we get the previous years. So 2015 revenue is $700,000. And we expended more than that revenue this year. Is that something that also revolves, and there's more money coming in?
Yes and no. So we did, so I... We had an increase in particularly medical expenses for medically fragile students, and for some of those nursing costs, we used my... Essentially, we used some of the circuit breaker to pay for that, those unexpected costs. And that was we... So that's why we ate more into circuit breaker than we would have normally eaten.
But there is more money there? I mean, I thought it was a finite amount of money that we get. So there is more that you can tap into? Because it says we spent more than we received.
Yeah, so we had a previous balance, yes.
Okay, that's what I didn't understand.
That might be something helpful to include in the next. So, you know, when I do my occasional reports on grants and funds, I'll provide the balance so that'll give you a much clearer idea of where we are, and I can reply to that as well.
And the other thing that stood out was the school lunch? The revenue was more than the expenditure? And I know when we've had the separate accounts, it looked like it was starting to make some money.
So, yeah, and so Mr. Shaheen is scheduled to come back and give a fuller presentation and food service, but the big improvement there has been reducing our expenditure.
So that's why I wanted to note that that's a good part of the report.
All right, so we've actually touched on a lot of the issues to see... So somebody asked me what the purpose of this slide was when I was showing them, and mostly it's because...
We were just having fun.
Mostly because it looks pretty, and that's important. But this is to sort of give a sense of the trends in our largest other sources of income i.e. beyond our local appropriation. So this is four years' worth of revenue and expenditure for each of these funds. The blue is the revenue, and red is expenditure. So you should expect to see, you know, they should be about the same size in a single year. And we want them to be getting bigger. We want the blue one, which is revenue, to be getting bigger. So you can see for school lunch, the red little block has got slightly smaller as expenditure is getting lower. Circuit breaker, our revenue, has gone down a little, and our expenditure did not go down that much. And so that means we have it eating into our balance. IDEA, so that did... That comes back to that issue about the timing of the revenue. So although the blue box at the end on the individual with disabilities, although that is smaller, that's largely because of the timing of receipts. Likewise, with Title I, school choice... School choice, we have seen a reduction in the number of students coming into the district, and that is why we have less money, and so we are spending less out of that account.
Yeah.
And that's improving educator quality, Title Two, we're receiving more money and spending it. And I just, the care, school year, and summer program, I combined these to see this is, you know, they've, over the last couple of years, consolidated a lot of grants, so that's why there's no previous boxes, but you can see this is a growing part of our budget and transportation, which we've already talked about. So overall, so this is eh, the trends in our expenditure from all our revenue, so we have been able to reduce. So I should see, this just, this slide gives you the, the major account, how much we spent from all sources in FY sixteen, and then the trend in the last five years. So this little trend line, it's just like a line graph, that just, one thing to just eh, caution against is that obviously, each line is not, is, cannot be compared, so for example, in classroom, if you're looking at administration in classroom and specialist teachers, you're representing different amounts of money, so changes.
The Y-axis isn't the same.
Yes, exactly, so the slo, the slope does not indicate the same amount of money, so when you see that significant drop in administration, the value of that is a lot less than equivalent slope in classroom teachers, so we have seen a drop in administration, which is good. Eh, classroom and specialist teachers has gone up. Eh, we have seen, you know, we have seen an incre, a slight increase there in instructional materials. And I think the other one, you know, I wanted to highlight was also a slight, just starting to creep up in professional development, and I know that has been an aim, that is something we're working towards. And then lastly, people services, which is primarily transportation, and that has gone down, and that's partly because some of those expenses are now transferred over to the town, and also eh, we have reduced to have, to the, the number of students we're transporting, and that helped us save some money. And eh, that's it.
So I have, because I'm looking at a different.
Yeah, so that's not the same, it's a different eh.
Yeah, that confuses me, I always get confused with these different graphs and things.
Yeah, yeah.
But, so I'm looking at this, and I just, all I want is just the clarification on the difference between administration, which is at about three percent, and then instructional leaderships, eh, which is at nine, or close to ten percent. What's, who goes into the instructional leadership category?
Instructional leadership is the schools, is the staffing in the schools, so that's like assistant principals, principals, eh, and all the costs related with running this or the overall school.
So administrators technically are in that group.
Pardon?
Administrators are technically in that group, like assistant principals.
So assistant principals and principals and are, well, so they're considered instructional leaders.
Right.
Because in theory, they're leading instruction. Whereas administration is, is the district-wide stuff, like business and finance, superintendent's office, other district-wide administration technology even, which is kind of more, the way I think about it is more like the district-wide things that work on the district level, as opposed to the school level.
Okay, all right, thank you. And, and I hate to do this, but I do have one, one more question. Just for clarification, if I can even find it where I had it here. It was about West Wareham Academy.
Yep.
Because it was showing expenditures and also revenue, and I'm just curious how, oh, I found it, how that could be, because once again, that doesn't exist either.
So that was closed down in the middle of the year, so once it was closed, we spent all the money, well, the money was spent by the end of the program, so it actually didn't finish until mid-two thousand and sixteen. So that's why it shows some of the revenue that came in before that and expenditure that went out.
Okay, I just, all right. Thank you.
Ah, variety of topics. One is, I, it's remarkable that we went from thirty to forty-one out of district placements, and that raised the cost a million dollars.
Yeah.
That's a staggering amount for eleven students.
Oh, one can cost you.
I under, I understand, I understand.
Yeah.
And it's not a value judgment I'm making, it's just a, that's a staggering amount of money. I.
And that's why we need to strengthen our programs in district.
I couldn't agree more, but that's, there are risks associated with doing that, because sometimes you try to do that, you don't succeed, and students suffer and all the rest, but you know more about that than I do, I'm just commenting.
No, I know.
And I know that the, I bet she's working hard on it.
There, there is a category of other teaching services.
Yep.
Which from two thousand twelve to two thousand sixteen, at the same time that we were shrinking in, as a student, in terms of students, went up over four hundred thousand dollars from one point four to one point eight million.
Yep.
That's also a staggering amount of money as well. Would you or the superintendent have any comment on that, that category?
Other, other teaching services.
Other teaching services, which includes my favorite line item of substitutes.
So it all, yeah, eh, and it also includes paraprofessionals.
Right.
So, and then all their guys is.
But when, this gets to the whole issue of fixed versus variable costs, but it's one thing for the cost to be maintained, and you're, and you're shrinking in terms of number of students, and therefore your cost per student rises.
Yep.
Which I completely understand. It's another thing for your population to be shrinking, and your other teaching services to be dramatically rising. That, that fundamentally seems counterintuitive, unless there's an explanation I just don't understand.
So I wanna see, so with other teaching services, so there's also, I mean, you can see home instruction as, is in, is part of that.
Right, and I saw that, and my question is, who gets home instruction?
So any students who are, you know, sort of examples.
But is it an ad hoc thing, or is it part of an IEP, or what?
IEP based on needs of, I mean, superintendent, but if you're med, if you're unable to get to school for medical reasons.
Student that's out on suspension.
Right.
We have to provide home services.
So they misbehave, they're suspended, and then we send a teacher home to teach them.
That's the law.
It's.
Yeah, that's exactly right, you hit the nail right on the head. How do you like it?
Yeah.
Not very much, when I see four hundred thousand dollars. All right, I've made my point, but go ahead, Michael, sorry.
I was just gonna add, and I'm just, my memory, I'm trying to remember when we moved to full day kindergarten, because I know that more paraprofessionals were employed.
Well, that, that would be, yes.
Part of that.
And that's something we clearly wanted to do. I, I will say, just a fifty thousand foot comment, the very first page, which you didn't show.
Yep.
Eh, shows that we are now approximately thirteen percent above foundation budget.
Yep.
Which, for those people not familiar with the whole foundation budget process, and that represents about four point two million over foundation budget. The average school district in the Commonwealth, the last time I looked, which was, I don't know, six months ago, was nineteen percent above foundation, which means that we could be, we'd be, we'd have to spend about two million dollars more.
Yeah.
Just to get to average in Wareham Public Schools. So even though costs are rising, and I don't necessarily understand, and I don't need to understand every single line item, we are still a pretty frugal district when it comes to the, comparing to the rest of the Commonwealth.
So there's a, and I have provided a link, obviously, we have a vested interest in it, but there is a link in that paper to a recent, a report on the Foundation Budget Review Commission Report, which analyzed why the foundation budget is so out of step with what people actually need to spend in districts.
I wish you hadn't brought that up.
I hadn't?
Yes, because it's, they've accomplished nothing.
Yeah, right, I know.
They spent money, they had published a report which told everybody what everybody already knew, and now, and the legislature has done nothing with it.
Yeah.
It's, it's a sad commentary, but anyway. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
The, the only thing that kind of, just to build on what Mr. Swett said, in terms of the foundation and being over foundation and so forth, you know, and looking at this report, there's a couple of things that stuck out for me, and I'm not the financial analyst that you guys are, but correct me if I'm wrong, but the thing that bothers me more than anything is the fact that when you get evaluated on what, you know, how far above we are in foundation and so forth and so on, it takes on total school spending, which is, is, is non-net and net, both combined, to, and that's how they, they come up with the numbers. Well, if you take a look at these numbers, you know, our net is pretty well flatlined over the last years. I mean, you're averaging maybe a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year increase in the net, but the dramatic increase was in non-net. Um, and you know, that, you know, when you really come right down to it, it's, it's, it's the net school spending that I am most concerned about, because that's what's spent directly on kids.
You don't mean non-net, you mean in-kind?
In-kind, I'm, I meant in-kind, I used the wrong word, I'm sorry. So the in-kind has gone up dramatically, but all of that is factored in in terms of foundation. So if you really take a look at our net school spending, you know, it's almost flatlined over the last five or six years, and obviously, that bothers me, all right? The second thing is that the charters and choice is absolutely killing us. And I don't know the remedy for that, I really don't, other than working real hard to make our system a desirable system for our kids to go to school and for parents to have faith in. But it's, it's the, it's how they determine all of these factors. So even though we've had an increase of thirteen percent on our over foundation, if you really take a look at the in-kind expense and factor that out.
Yeah.
Then we probably haven't had any.
Yep.
And that, and that bothers me, and I know, I don't know if my analysis is right, Jeff, I really don't, but it bothers me.
Well, yes, but keep in mind that the, the in-kind is a big, huge chunk of that.
Oh, I know, it's healthcare.
It's healthcare.
I know, I understand.
And we're, and we're also educating a shrinking population.
Right.
But fixed costs versus variable, I'm not sure what you think the percentage difference is.
Yeah.
Have you ever thought about, is it, it's not that far from fifty-fifty, is it? I mean, your fixed costs are pretty darn high.
Yeah, it depends if you consider the teacher a fixed cost.
Well, no, you can't consider the teacher a fixed cost.
In which case, actually, because teaching and staff is by far the biggest part of our budget.
Some of the staff exists, whether there's.
Yeah.
Whether there's a hundred people there or a hundred and fifty people there, it's the same staff.
Yeah.
A principal, you need a principal in every building, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah.
So a principal is, in my mind, a fixed cost.
Yeah.
But the individual classroom teacher is not a fixed cost, but that's the problem in a nutshell.
Yeah.
To your point, Dr. Sylvia, the, the problem with the, the well-intentioned idea of school choice and charters is, well, there are multiple problems, but from an expense point of view,
Right.
you're basically taking the same number of kids and putting them in more locations, and each location has a set of fixed costs.
Well, that's right, and I, I'm gonna.
And that's, and that's simply going to raise the cost of education.
And, and that's exactly right, and the other thing too, that's, that's indelibly clear to me, is how flat-lined chapter seventy is.
Yeah, so I can, so for.
I mean, we're, we're getting no relief to speak of on chapter seventy.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Did you have anything else to say?
Thank you very much.
Uh, one thing I'd like to say is, I, you know, in September, I think you would know how many students are out of district, and how many students you have opting in for school choice, and how many students left. Do you think we could get these numbers in September in those two areas?
Eh, so in September, yeah, so the only thing we don't have, because the only thing we don't have in September is there's a state report we have to submit by October first.
Then I guess after October first, I'm saying, will we be able to get that?
And what, well, that tells us the students that we have here that are school choice, but what we, it then takes us longer to get is the information about our students who have gone elsewhere, because we don't know, naturally, you know, if a kid, kid doesn't enroll, we don't naturally know where they've gone.
When do you find that out?
We, we get report like Christmas, because it has to go like, I know, it's, it's, you know, it's frustrating for us as well, because what happens is, you know, every, all the districts submit all these reports in October, and then there's this kind of clearing up process where they try and work out where everybody's come from, where they've all gone, and they gather more information, and Michelle's involved in that, and we eventually get that number, because it's important for us, because it tells us how much money we're getting in school choice and things like that.
We'll know which way we're moving.
Soon as, and we know, I mean, we can give you some of that information, once we do the sim, the state report for October, and as soon as we have the rest, we can show it.
Yeah, and I'd like to know how we're moving in special education, you know, with the out of district, which way we're moving now.
That, we can definitely provide more information on, on, come October first.
Okay. Jeff?
You know what we don't see, at least I don't remember ever seeing, are the kids that return, whether it's from Upper Cape, or charters, or school choice, or whatever. That would, that would be an interesting report to see as well.
I think that's very important to see our trends, if we're making, you know, if we're making progress in attracting students, if we're still losing, and if we're making any progress in the out of district with trying to get a handle on them.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, is there any more discussion about this report?
All set.
Thank you.
All set, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Good job, large, very large report, thank you. Okay, next is acceptance of gifts.
I would ask the committee to please accept the ten thousand dollar donation from Eastern Bank, Eastern Bank Charitable Foundation to the Beyond School Time and Family Engagement in the Wareham Public Schools. This will be used to fund groups for underserved and at-risk families.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, fa, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, four zero zero.
It's a great gift, but it puts Nicole Starmer and her PTAs forty-three thousand, just, it's a remarkable achievement on the part of the PTA.
It is. Yes, certainly is. Okay, and next, your report, Madam Superintendent.
I have another donation, acceptance of gifts, a fifty dollar donation from Mr. Greg Worrell of Wareham to the beyond.
Jeff.
Jeff, yeah, thank you.
He spells it the same way I do.
Beyond School Time for the Food Backpack Program.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Al, we have to accept that.
Moving, accept.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four oh oh.
Okay, thank you. Briefly, today we began with our teachers and paraprofessionals with opening day, they will be here again tomorrow with, for professional development. Our opening day of school for the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year for students is August twenty-ninth, and for kindergarten and preschool, it will be September sixth. Bus routes have been published, students have been picking up their Chromebooks at the high school, other students will be receiving, from grade seven through eight, will receive Chromebooks during the first two weeks of school, there's a parent permission that will need to be signed, et cetera, et cetera, so there's a process. Other than that, students will not be bringing Chromebooks home, however, they do have access daily, and they do have their own Chromebook to be, to use.
I'm sorry, could you? Who's bring, who's able to?
Seven, seven through twelve.
Can bring them home.
Will be able to bring them home, once permission has been signed.
Oh.
Yeah.
And that's with or without insurance?
They have a choice.
And if they don't get the insurance?
There's responsibility.
Good luck with that.
I, I understand.
Is the co-op in?
Is the co-op in, involved in that seven to twelve?
Everybody.
Everybody.
Everybody, from special ed to regular ed.
Separately separate rooms.
Everybody. We will not.
That's good.
And every teacher, every counselor, um, everyone.
Good.
We're thrilled. And we certainly appreciate the support of the committee, as well as the support of the town, because that's been able to purchase the Chromebooks.
Do we know what percentage have, have, have purchased insurance?
Not yet. It just started. Um, and we have one more hire for professional staff and a couple of hires for paraprofessionals. So we hope with fingers crossed that we're fully staffed on day one. However, if we're not, we will be staffed in that room. So, we're off to a flying start. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other business?
I, I would just, in, I just thought of it when, um, I think, you know, you've brought up a couple of times, I'd like to see this report. I have a discussion about this. Um, I've, in, our lives get busy and we forget. I'd just like to see follow-up on, on those things. For example, I'd like to see Cliff at one time mention the State Discipline Report, um, having a discussion about that. Um, I'd like to see follow-up on that. Um, Jeff, you had talked about the use of subs, I'd like to see that. Um, I had talked about seeing a co-op improvement plan, it would be great to see that as well. Um, and then one other comment I just wanted to make, thinking about it when I saw the list of people, um, resigning, I wa, you know, and I myself had resigned and we were given a exit interview. Um, and I know that we would need permission, but I would like to see us get permission to look at those and, um, exit interviews, because it may give us some good feedback on what we could do to help retain staff.
Anyone else?
I have a, just a piece. And not to prolong the meeting, but I, I don't even know if I'm appropriate, um, and you can deem me out of order. But I, I think it's important and, um, uh, I just thought that I would, I would mention it because it's my own bias, um, and it is a little political. So feel free to rule me out of order. But as you well know, we have an election coming up and there is a ballot question, uh, coming up. And I'm very, very upset at the way that, um, the charter school advancement is being spun. Um, and the reason I'm upset about it is because it's, it's indicating or insinuating, um, that it is a public school and that any monies, um, that more money, if they vote for question two, that more money will be going to public schools. Well, yeah, it'll be going to the charter schools. Um, and I don't like the insinuation that if people vote for the increase in charter schools that somehow or other, there is going to be a hurricane of money, uh, coming into the public school systems, um, which is virtually not true. So I, I'm very, very upset at the, um, the deceptive way in which they're spinning this. Um, and because there is no way in any way, shape or form, that increasing the number of charter schools is going to help public schools. Uh, it's just not going to do it, because it, that pie gets divided, um, with more people. So I just thought, um, I, I'm very upset about the whole thing in general, um, but I'm very, very upset at the way it's being presented. Uh, and I just hope the people, when they vote, um, that they, they understand exactly what they're voting for. That while it may seem like a, a great thing to vote for the advancement, uh, the, uh, increase of charter schools, um, I think overall, it will hurt public education. So that's my bias. And I'm, I'm most upset about the way it's being presented.
I think this committee made its feelings about charter schools very clear a few meetings ago.
I just thought a reminder would be in order.
Because we aren't inundated with those commercials right now.
It says it's more money for public schools, that's not true.
I have a very effective filter.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Oh, we need to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four, four.